Our flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Jim Carpenter.
President.
Mel Black.
Here.
Lois Bailey here, Tim Onom.
Here.
Alan Campbell.
Here.
Mark Walter absent. Rebecca Bennett here, Keith Sedun.
Here.
Charles Cockeau.
Here. So we do have four. Approval or agenda or any changes to the agenda, and I actually have one. Add an item 10 under discussion. Essentially, the topic is 2026 grant applications. Any other changes that someone would like to make to the agenda? None. Our last motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded by Lois.
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Conflict of interest? Does anybody have any conflict of interest with any of the items on today's agenda? There are none. I'll assume none. We have a public comment. Anyone wish to make a public comment at this time? Any staff comments?
I have to make a departure between 4:30 and 4:40. So if I totally early off, finish the minutes in the morning, and our very qualified secretary will complete notes as well.
Any other staff comments? Consideration of the minutes from our August 28 meeting. Changes or comments about the August 28 meeting?
One typo was brought to my attention, and I'll correct it. A word. Targeting, targeting, instead of starting.
The motion to approve the minutes from the August 28th minute has amended.
It was gonna be like, sure.
Support by. Jim. Motion by Lois, I guess.
Yeah.
All in favor of approving the minutes from our August 28th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no unfinished business. Move on to discussion items. First one being review of the Parks and Recreation financials, which you just received. Kathy, do you have any comments you'd like to make about this?
Just that this is through August 31st.
I'm gonna ask you, it's kind of when I speak up, I'm actually hard of hearing today.
Sure. This is through August 31st, your budgetary status. I did take a look at what's happened in September, just to watch a few line items. Into September and October, the wages for Jordan will still be charged to this account. So if he has any overtime or whatnot, I'll watch it. We're not line item. You've underspent on some other lines, so I'll keep an eye on it through October. And then his wages then shift back to buildings and grounds, as well as the expenses tied to him, which would be his cellphone and whatnot. And then we'll pay the final bills for gas and oil for parks, and that'll be in November. So we'll know pretty much how this wraps up before year end. So I'll keep an eye on it. I'm not too concerned about any one-line item. Looking into September, repair and maintenance is gonna go over the $40,000, but not by much. And we can certainly look at transaction history on that to see what derives that. And I can share that with Patrick and with you, Charlie, if you'd like.
Are there any outstanding commitments for projects that would end up getting the capital outlay budget?
Not that I'm aware of. I think you bought your big items already this year.
So if we wanted to move the money from current 2025 budget into the Parks and Rec Capital Fund, recommend doing that in November?
I would have, you would put that before the Board of Commissioners and ask for them to decide if they'd like to do that. It'd be a November agenda. Well, it could be October if you wanted to. If you knew you weren't gonna buy anything more.
Yes. I'm planning to do that in, I mean, the November meetings, fine, I think. That would be okay. We wouldn't know anything that came in in October. One we cannot do it at.
Yeah, either month, whatever works. Otherwise, I don't have anything exciting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. You're not supposed to. Anybody else have questions for Kathy besides me?
Thanks, Kathy.
Sure.
Moving on to Facilities Directors' operational update.
I'll let George talk about operations, and then if there's a 10,000-foot view on other things.
Speak at the microphone's place.
Sure thing. I'll let, I'll let him talk about operations, and if I can fill in any of the, the other gaps, I will.
All right. So operations have been going awfully smoothly. Nothing really to note that would have anything to do, or any business to do with you guys. We have been, we're pretty much finished up with the pit toilets and stuff. I think I mentioned that last time. Those are pretty much squared away. Soccer, fall soccer seasons in full swing over at Miles Camerely, so we've had a lot of people in and out of there. We've been doing a little project with, I don't know, the medium over at Miles Camerely. I'm sure you guys are aware with that. In the drive, it was kind of overdue for some attention. So we've been kind of chipping away at that, trying to clean that up a little bit. Other than that, there's really nothing else to note. Do you guys have any concerns or anything for me? Anything to add?
I can just touch on a couple of things that deal with up at my level. The, I wasn't sure if I was gonna talk about this, but the Beavers are back. So I told Dwayne to go ahead and call the DNR and, and ask what, what happens if we leave them there. You know, we're not exactly sure on, on what their behavior is. They tend to favor poplars, I'm told. And so my concern, of course, is for the 20 new trees we planted. So we're gonna make a call to the DNR. The, the trapping for those is pretty pricey. The quote that Jordan got was right around $2,200 a week, something like that.
For two weeks.
For two weeks.
That's with, pretty. Traparound, who we've used in the past. So we're kind of looking at alternate routes right now.
If there are any leads in the room or at home and public on trapping services, we'd be interested. You can email me at proach@lelandaw.com, or gov, rather.
Sounds like the story of the Beavers. I mean, do they, is there a certain noise that they?
Well, they, they really, I don't know. I don't know.
I think it's just the perfect habitat for them back there. It's swampy. It's wet. It's.
No, I just thought if you, you know, like the bird deterrents.
The propane guns?
Yeah, I mean, if you've had some kind of.
Do we have a propane gun?
No, we don't. We're overspent on our budget.
They've had noise.
Yeah.
Well, they can't relocate them. They have to destroy them.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
That's, that's it. I mean, traparound actually eats the backstraps, so.
See?
Yeah.
Once you've got them, you know, not without killing them.
So, yeah. Well, my thought is, is how much damage they're gonna do and on what species if they stay. And so that's why I said DNR. If you folks would like to have the discussion on that. Yeah, so.
We need any action from us to tell you, go ahead.
We'll, we'll consult the DNR, and we can report back to you what they told us.
My guess is DNR is gonna tell us it's our problem.
Yeah.
Oh, not looking to them to solve it. I wanna find out if we do nothing, what happens.
Oh, no, that was my, my question is, well, you don't sound like we're gonna.
You know already be seen if they were gonna build a dam, but no, they had it pretty well constructed.
Yeah, we, we've got just a lot of pictures of some, some pretty thick trees. How many trees would you say, individual, that you saw?
One finger.
There's, there's a lot. There's a lot.
More than 12?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're very active back there right now.
Yeah.
Are they mostly maples?
Yeah, yeah, for the most part. But there's some bigger ones.
I saw where they went into.
Sure. When they repopulate, about as fast as they fall, so if they can get enough sunlight, it may not be that big a game.
Yeah, they come down.
What part of the property are they?
Say mainly between, say, the two-track and Shipwreck Pond, kind of in that area, by the midway bridge. So if you take a walk back there, you can see it's there. Yeah, they've been busy, so.
But you don't have any evidence of dam making anywhere, right?
Not dams, but I think they may have found their dens. So. But, yeah, I've been keeping an eye on it, and so if it becomes a bigger issue, I guess.
I mean, we gotta do something different. In fact, we start having rising water that's rushing out rip paths and stuff, but.
I mean, if there's nothing preventative we can do, then I guess we'll just keep an eye on it, but.
Where they're at? Is there low land in there or?
And, I mean, it's low. I mean, it's swampy. It's water. There's, there's a couple of feet of water in there, so.
So they are building a lodge, though you said about the lodge?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm thinking, I mean, we, this got brought up last fall, and we didn't find anything.
We paid him to pull empty traps.
Yeah, so I think they've been at it for a while now.
I do have something to talk about. It's just kind of, we are over budget in the parks on, as Kathy stated, repair and maintenance, where I don't know if we're over on overtime yet, because our earliest, our budget status report, this is period ending 31. I assume we are probably over on overtime as well, and I know we are over on gas. Remind everybody, I do not write that budget. I didn't write it last year, and that is something the administrator does with, with finance. But I, I think that it speaks to the point Charles made at his presentation yesterday, that the parks are probably somewhat underfunded. And obviously, the overtime comes in trying to do as much as we can within a given day.
Well, as, as you get more experience, you kind of figure out if you're underfunding our regular papers.
And I can make those suggestions, but again, I don't, I don't write it. I definitely make suggestions when it comes that time, but.
Can I ask how we're doing in comparison to the previous year, as far as spending on parks?
Uh, no, you can certainly ask, and I'll have to get back to you. I can go back and look at the records and kind of see what, you know, I think I have budget status from that time as well.
Kathy might have.
Oh, yeah.
I can give you a comparison, and if you wanted to see it today.
Oh, I just.
Campbell is in your budget book. If you look at his budget, it's at three previous audited years.
Right.
But I can send a comparison out.
It's just, for me, it let me know where, if the budget was the same. I just like to have the history.
Sure.
And we were able to transfer essentially all of the capital outlay money that were in the previous budgets into this fund. So obviously, we didn't overrun that.
No, but I think we're talking about expenses, maintenance expenses mainly, and just how we're doing in maintenance expenses.
I don't want to ask if it's be over or anything, but. Well, yeah, if you're gonna, if you're gonna know.
Thank you, Doctor.
Sure. Thanks, George.
Administrator, any update for us?
Just quickly, you did, you were ably represented by your chair.
Please be at the mics at home.
You were ably represented yesterday at our budget work session by your chair, Mr. Godbutt, at the, before the Board of Commissioners, he outlined some of the things that you'd like to see occurring in both staffing and in project. We also did discuss the transfer of the, of the, into, the transfer into capital, capital projects. I think the main, the main issue that we have from the board level is we're still in the process of discussing where our revenues are, and that will drive a lot of where we go, what we're able to do for not just Parks and Recreation, but any, any other parts of our, of our, our operations. Had Commissioner Campbell express his desire to have priorities given to park, park construction and things like that. We do have, not budget-related, but I do have some data regarding the other property owned by the county that, that you inquired at about at your last meeting, in particular, in particular, the area that is waterfront near Inspiration Point overlooking Glen Lake. That, we can give you, get that information to you for review, but it looks like it's an extremely steep area from the, the park. I can't remember the name of, the name of the road that, that Inspiration Point travels by, but it's a several hundred feet drop to the, and a fairly, in fairly steep conditions to, to the waterfront. Not to say we wouldn't do anything, but that's probably, perhaps problematic to actually develop anything there. The other area that did seem to be of some potential utility is an area that is in the vicinity of Bugai Road and Fouts, I believe. If I recall, it's the northeast corner. So if you're coming into, you know, from Grand Travers through Leland County, when you're on Bugai Road, it would be on your right-hand side, on the, on the other side of Fouts Road. That's, that's actually owned by, owned by the Road, Road Commission, and there is a fairly substantial. owned by the road, road commission, and there is a fairly substantial area of flat ground that could potentially be used for something if it was in your, in your desire to do so. As far as the budget goes, I think uh, we are most through, mostly through September, we'll be working on hearing from the departments. Once we conclude that in September, the first meetings in October will be more decision-making time, if you will. I think that'd be the best way to describe it. As to what we're going to do, uh, I have been advocating that the board should look at authorizing certain capital projects in their budget, uh, budget narrative, rather than waiting until such time as uh, they have a better handle of revenues to to uh, to make those approvals, so. How that impacts the park, I, parks, I think is very much in the air still, and I really can't give you any concrete uh, concrete information on that. Have any questions?
Any questions? So yesterday, when you were at the um, the work session, and you talked a little bit about staffing, could you share with us what your thoughts were about?
Well, I went, I went back to the bylaws, and in our bylaws, there are actually two staff positions specified that the county should be providing people to be doing handwriting. One is a parks coordinator and the other is a volunteer coordinator. The parks coordinator function at the moment is kind of being done by Patrick. So we're not, I'm saying that was filled, but we always modify the way the organization is to to actually have a parks coordinator. The other one is the volunteer coordinator, which is currently unpositioned and unveiled. And one of our goals and our finer plan essentially is to get friends who will go on each one of the parks. Continue our, our associations with the various civic organizations who are active in our parks and working in our parks and volunteering in our parks. Um, so that will be that person's function to stay engaged with those groups and probably improve the relationships with a couple of them. So I've asked that that position be budgeted and filled sometime during twenty-twenty-six. Exactly when, I'll let the administrator and those people figure it out. Um, but that was my one, that was, that was ask number one. The other asks were, I went back to our two-eighteenth executive committee meeting where we specified the priorities for capital projects at the park. We essentially had five priority projects. Two of them had grant, grant applications out, so the lower pond loop trail, the disc golf project. Then the gazebo work project. The one for repairing the path of Veronica Valley that keeps washing out. So getting an engineered fix for that. And right at the moment, I'm drawing a blank on number on the fourth project, but.
The gazebo and or storage?
No, that was, I mentioned that one.
Oh, did?
The stairs, the gazebo.
The stairs, the stairs down to the, down to the, to the forefront and all that, all that stuff.
The bathrooms at the poor farm.
Bathroom.
The bathrooms.
The bathrooms at the poor farm were. So that was the discussion, uh, didn't really come to. They asked what our top pri- three priorities would be from the list that I gave them. Essentially, it was the two that had grant applications out. Not the gazebo work, but we're not really sure what we're doing there yet. Um, and this this repair of the path of Veronica Valley Park.
You, Catherine, has some questions?
No, I was gonna offer what Lauren already said. It's okay.
Yeah, and and I would, I would indicate in in that as well, that the bylaws of this commission cannot and do not dictate to the board uh, what they, what staffing they would provide. That's not something that was, is within the purview of the commission uh, through its bylaws to dictate, but the need for what you've suggested as far as funding is certainly being taken into consideration. We also uh, really, in my office, Lauren does a lot of what would be uh, volunteer coordination with uh, not so much, I would say, volunteer coordination, but when, when there's uh, requests for use of the park, she is often involved in coordinating with the groups that use use the park and things like that. She also, one of the other things that was discussed is uh, is someone to, with grant writing capabilities, and Lauren actually is a certified grant writer through uh, through uh, through past training and hasn't had much opportunity to, to utilize that that skill. But uh, potentially could be in the future. So those, those things are not uh, being ignored, I guess, is what I want to, want to indicate to you all.
Now, segue with that. That was my number three ask. I essentially presented the conceptual designs for all the parks, just to keep them informed, the board commissioners that, you know, we got a lot of work ahead. If we want to actually implement these conceptual designs. We only probably done maybe forty percent of the work that was required for Veronica Valley since twenty-seventeen. We've just barely scratched the surface now with the new conceptual design for Miles Kimmelman Park. Obviously, all stuff has been, the older the parks is built, it's just now an amends and repair mode. Except for this ramp structure down to the waterfront replacing the stairs. So my ask was, I also provided the list of all the capital projects that are required to complete the implementation of those conceptual designs that I turned into CIPs. And essentially, the ask is to get money in the budget to to have someone scope out each one of the projects in the list, identify whether it is a grant potential project, and then ultimately write grant applications for those that we want them to go forward with in the near term. And we have a target date right now. We would have to have these grant applications for twenty-twenty-six in place by April first of twenty-twenty-six. To be awarded by the end of the year twenty-twenty-six to actually be able to do any work in twenty-twenty-seven. That was, that was my third item.
I just wanted to say, I like the idea of parks coordinator and volunteer coordinator, but I'm also very concerned about additional staffing needs for Patrick and his crew. And I don't understand the process of what we go through to, in fact, identify one or two positions or increase pay scales for the existing staff. Where, how do we proceed with that?
I mean, I can, I can.
Wall, wall park.
I can address that. I mean, tho- those, those are decisions that are ultimately made by the board of commissioners. But, but your recommendation uh, and request and recommendation would certainly be taken into consideration. We're in the, we're right in the hip, hip deep in our budget process right now, so. But I can be very candid that I don't sense a significant appetite on the part of the board to expand staff in any areas. I think I'm fairly accurate in saying that, Commissioner Campbell. I don't know if you'd agree with that or not, but I don't see a lot of appetite in that at all.
I had mentioned that for two thousand twenty-six budget, the board last night, I had an opposing view, but the board last night said that it got actually an immediate hiring freeze fully in all county while the budget is being prepared. Uh, and uh, but my concern was more next year's uh, to the two thousand twenty-six budget. I don't think there's an appetite for increasing the overall staff here in Leamont County. This is, I'm one-seventh, so I'm not trying to speak on behalf of other board commissioner members. I think there is a, a, a thought process that would, that we should, probably for the first time in 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 many, many years, look at the staffing within our departments and see if there should be shuffling around. That, that as technology has changed and efficiency has changed, are people placed in the right departments or positions?
I think that that's, that's fairly accurate, and I would agree that, you know, I, neither I nor Commissioner Campbell speak for the entire board. I just have some idea of what the thinking for all of those board members are, at least for this budget year. And I don't see, I, I don't like to deliver bad news, but I also don't want to be dishonest. I just don't see a whole lot of appetite for increasing, significant increase in staff, uh, at least at this, at this point.
Sure.
If there be any, it would be potentially reshuffling, as as indicated by Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I understand that, that staffing, but the other option is increasing pay of existing personnel. And any discussion at the board of commissioners about that?
There has been, there has.
So that is, is, is union negotiations.
A lot of it, a lot of it is, yes, exactly.
And so those, those, the the pay for personnel has been set for the next three years, except, I mean, for unionized positions.
Yeah, well, the, the, the four collective bargaining agreements that we just concluded were all twenty-four-seven law enforcement uh, units. We had concluded the Teamsters uh, before I arrived here last year, but uh, but Commissioner Campbell's correct that there's a three percent uh, raise over the next two years, and a fourth year is four percent, or excuse me, third year is four percent, and the, and the fourth year is undefined, but it's uh, it's subject to be reopened by all other terms of the contract are, are remain in place, but in, in all, each side gets to pick one, one uh, reopen or issue. And in all likelihood, that will be wages uh, selected on the part of the union, so. Those, those wages, uh, as far as increasing goes, on, on annual increases are going to be going up. Uh, it's where uh, department heads are actually asking for some changes in classification and, and I, I, I think that's where I'm seeing most of it, is changes in classifications of certain employees because of changes in jobs. But that's where we're at right now. I think that's, that's gonna end up being the focus instead of, instead of adding uh, new bodies. I, I just want to be honest with what I see in, in the future.
And I think at all the board of commissioner meetings and, and obviously here as well, we end up getting into discussions about cost of living. In our, in our case, with the Parks and Rec staff, being able to afford to live on those salaries and.
Well, that's another.
Living in the county.
That's another issue altogether.
Because we're not, we're in that stage now where we'll probably start losing employees. For a number reason, but one of them is cost of living.
I have, I have maintained that I think we're, we're beyond the tipping point of that personally, but, you know, it's but on the other hand, we do have some, some employees that drive through other units of government that pay more, but they come here to work, so. What do you make of that?
Well, I'd love to come and sit down with you and talk money at some point, when you get a chance, just to.
I'd be happy to do that. Uh, probably wouldn't want to do it un- until sometime in October because we are quite busy on on those issues right now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Take care of that subject? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Miles Kimmelman Park Disc Golf Project.
Yeah, uh, I mean, I was able to get a return call from the manager, Greg Argyle. Thank you, Catherine. And their budget holds firm for the phase one. And they just called this puppy up for us. That would still be in the thirteen thousand uh, sixteen dollar range for new uh, tee signs, upgrading all eighteen baskets. Uh, adding a practice basket and the shipping of all that, which is pretty minor. And then uh, replacement and uh, relocation of the existing tees for two of the holes, five and seventeen. I, I would like to make a recommendation to the board of commissioners that we proceed with that uh, phase one thirteen thousand sixteen uh, dollar project.
Motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Who was the second? Any discussion?
So that certainly would demonstrate to those users of that kind of activity in parks that we're interested in improvements. So if we can find a way to um, get names, like who leads these groups, because I'm sure they play disc golf lots of places. That's where our volunteer coordinator would be really valuable, to be able to uh, start getting a, a list of key figures in different activities.
Bringing out my spreadsheet only has Greg's name on the disc golf.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm gonna meet with Greg next week, so I'll be able to get some more names of some of the local club members and uh, get a feel for what their response would be to sharing costs for, down the road for that uh, beginner and parent course, which I don't think we need to do right now.
Second part of my question is the, is Greg's organization going to do the work if we sole source it to them, or do we need to go out for bids?
I'm not sure what the process is here.
We need to go.
You need to go. That's, that's his bid, but I can certainly get some names of other companies.
Could, could you get me his specified items, so that I can, it can be apples to apples, but I, I can, I can go out for more bids?
Okay, great. I will do that.
I, I think, I don't know that we have to do formal RFP and that one.
I would do this.
Three, three proposals would be sufficient to.
Okay.
Formal RFPs now.
Any other discussion?
Would, does this have to go through the county board also?
Ultimately, it has to be. If, if, this is a recommendation from you all to uh, the board.
Right, so our regular RFP uh, process, would we have to advertise for that?
No, at that level of expenditure, we would, our, our requirement is three bids. Three competitive bids, not a formal, necessarily formal RFP process. So we could do that, uh, and then it would be the presentation of a, of a potential contract to the to the board of commission if we have, we, we can find appropriate financial wherewithal for that expenditure. And you've got, you do have some currently in your capital. Capital budget.
Do you think you can get those other bids in time for the October board commission?
I did them pretty quickly, as long as I, like I said, have the itemized stuff so that it's the same comparison.
You got it.
So that sounds good.
First, I'll move them, I'll, I'll move the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Once we have a motion go forward with the project, asking the board of commissioners to approve it. I'd like us to target the October meeting.
Again, I, maybe it goes without saying, but when you, when you do pass motions like that, it would be helpful for us if the recommendation included something along the lines that, you know, subject to appropriate financing from, by, you know, determined by the finance department, that sort of. Is one of the things that the board commissioners expects us when they present, we present something like that, that as I said, maybe this goes without saying, because we're gonna do it anyway, but if we would present them, what's the source of the funds for that, for that, if, if you're asking for actual approval, so.
I'm assuming these funds, if we, if we go forward with it, would come out of the Parks and Rec Building Fund?
I believe that your capital, the capital, I believe that that would be the most appropriate if uh, if, and, and again, it helps to know, I think, the board to know that that's what you're endorsing. You're endorsing that use of funds along with the request to make purchase, that I think uh, would, it would certainly be helpful for their decision-making.
I'd be happy to amend my motions, so it does include that statement about using the capital funds for this project, recommending use of capital funds.
Yeah, you've got your unspent capital in this budget. You want to move the remained, or after you do your twenty-five purchases, to the fund fund? Yeah, you've got your unspent capital in this budget, you want to move the remained, or after you do your twenty-five purchases to the fund fund?
Right, we can do both of those things as, 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 uh, action items, to make that move. Move that, that money to the capital fund, and also use whatever the, whatever portion is necessary to fund this project in this budget year. And I think if you, if you, if you make that addition, just simply that you endorse the use of your capital fund, uh, budget to finance it, that I think would help the, the Board to know. For lack of a better word, very serious about this.
So we have an amendment motion, do I have a second from? Any support? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
I have this, those, who did the, the second again?
Yeah, it's, I wrote it down madly, um, to endorse the use of capital dollars to fund the project. To finance this capital outlay for the, I was kind of in a Disc Golf.
Yeah, I, I assume the, the old baskets are so old that any new money we spend to potentially replace, get new baskets would be capital. That was my assumption, straightforward. All right. Moving on to Old Settlers Gazebo needed to go forward.
I'd like to take that. Um, so legal determined, uh, we need ADA requirements with the other shelter that is there so that we do not need to lower it, and if that's the case of work, we're not going to make any changes to that. Um, I think we should move forward, that's my recommendation with refurbishing that existing gazebo, uh, sooner rather than later.
Prior meeting, I think we actually had a vote of this board, which said our preference was to do the lowering project. That was caveated with, assuming that we had to be ADA compliant to do it. Um, so I don't know, we need to, we need to retract that vote before we move on to another one.
Just to do the research, I don't recall. Was the vote just to do the research to get the, the bill?
That was, I think, an add-on, but we actually had a vote that said our preference was to go forward with the lowering project. So I think.
Do we ever get any kind of a cost factor, what does it can take to lower it?
No, we never got that far because we went into the research on whether or not, A, it was structurally capable of being done, and B, whether it was, that structure required ADA compliance. And we actually got the answer on both questions, was yes, it is structurally capable of being done and lowered. And B, it's not required for ADA compliance because there is a pavilion shelter within X number of feet of the existing structure, which would meet the ADA requirement for the area, for the city.
Yeah, I, I don't know when something moves from one category to another, as in from a capital improvement project to a maintenance project. Cause it seems to me, right now, we're looking at a maintenance project. Um, and, and so I'm not sure we even need to go into our building funds, I, I, I defer to folks in a better position than me, but, I mean, if you're talking about painting, then it's not a huge rough. And I, did, did I hear right, four to six thousand, was the estimate, or three to six, or?
Well, six thousand, I think, was just painting the existing decking, right?
The, the issue with the roof is that it's a cedar shingle roof that requires a certain level of craftsmanship to complete successfully, cedar shingles usually are custom made, so, uh, my, my indication is, is to maybe replace the rest of them, investigate that, to try to keep it lower.
But you can, you can go with a look-alike metal roof that looks like sheik's, my son did it on his log cabin.
I, I'd be interested in any information you have on that product. Um, I know that, that, uh, someone did something similar called Dragon Scale, a guy I was friends with, that was fairly pricey. I mean, that was probably, I think, for a small, a small cabin, I think that was almost five thousand.
My son is a contractor, and he's the one that did it on his own log cabin, it's beautiful.
Okay.
And it's metal, it's lasted his lifetime.
I'd be interested in any product in that cost, sure, we could incorporate that.
Where he got it, wanted to. Looks great.
And in terms of, I mean, we're talking about maybe a, a little bit of sanding. Uh, we'd have to buy a sand blaster, we had one, we weren't using it, so we took it back, we, it's still in the box. And, uh, we had plans for that, like, using a, it's basically walnut shell, so it was biodegradable, but it was something that just was not going to get done, so we took that device back, I could add that to the cost. Uh, but yeah, it was basically just, just paint, but there's, there's a prep work that needs to be done on that, and then, of course, the most expensive part is.
But to, to answer.
I guess first I'd like a motion that we retract the previous vote to preference the.
I don't think that you need that, you can incorporate your intentions into one new motion.
Okay, but.
I, I, I think Commissioner Campbell raises a very, very good point. This could potentially be treated as a repair and maintenance. The only question would be if there was adequate budget to cover the project, you might be, you might have to say you're willing to cover up to a certain amount coming from that capital fund. If, if it was necessary, that'd be the only thing, I, without, without Kathy at this point saying where, where our repair and maintenance budget would be.
Well, again, you're, you're not line item, so you are underspent in a couple of areas that could come, you're saying five thousand dollars to repair a roof is the first number I heard.
Well, my estimate is six.
Five to six. So that would be a repair and maintenance, that we put that line item over, but you're underspent in other areas and you might be able to do it without reducing the amount you'd be wanting to send to your capital fund. But we can also, I mean, if I take your capital fund remaining and take away the Disc Golf, you're at twenty-three, twenty-four thousand to go to your fund. If you, if it's another one thousand, just to make sure you get your roof repaired, then, you know, you're just reducing what you want to reserve unspent.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I would encourage, would, would, would really ask you guys to do would be to, to dip into that capital budget, or to authorize, the, authorize is not the right word, but to endorse the notion of taking some of that money, because that really is there for your projects, and, and if you do want to make sure you're covered and would endorse that, that sort of thing, that'd be fine, but what I'm hearing from Kathy, and she's very good at this, is knowing where the, 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 what I call dead money is in the budget that can be moved from, to other line items to make it, uh, to make it palatable to come out of repair and maintenance. And if it does, you don't even need any action necessarily, other than to in- endorse in some way, even if a motion, if you chose to direct, uh, the Facilities Department to do that work. I don't think you need to rescind any, any of your previous actions.
I don't even think we need a motion, I, I mean, I think it's just repair and maintenance, capital improvement, but you would normally do that.
Unless it would help formally endorse as a body.
You, I, you can do that, I, as Commissioner Campbell says, it's not necessary, but it, it certainly is something that, that.
Likelihood of getting it accomplished this year, so it would be a twenty-twenty-five expenditure is.
Oh. Probably not too good.
I thought we were in twenty-twenty-six, one year already.
Yeah. I could, you know, I can bring that up with Wayne today, he had some lines on it, and, and of course, if you have a special shingle that you think would be both attractive and durable, I'd be interested.
I know, dude.
Okay. I just need hard data, I mean, sometimes I ask for these things, and then all week I get crickets, so if you just email me what you have, I'll give you a lead. I just give him, I can give you a card.
How about we leave it at this, that, that if staff believes that we can complete the program through repair and maintenance, we'll do it. If we feel that that's not possible, and we'll need to dip into your capital, what will inform you when, and address that at the next meeting. Sound good?
Well, if we can't do it this year, maybe we can include it in our maintenance budget for next year, if it is very possible.
Carry it over, and you're still not dipping, somehow I, I just hold that.
Those funds for capital improvements and a, with a little tighter grip on the repair and maintenance.
Yes, I would endorse that.
From my corporate experience, so it's not governmental, if the age of the asset that you're doing, working on, and whether you are restoring the productive capacity of the asset, or improving productivity of the asset, determines whether the new money to repair the asset is capital. And that's the determination, so.
I would say, I didn't understand, which side do we fall on, corporately?
This project would actually fall on the, the, the expense side. Because I'm not, I'm not increasing the capacity of the asset, the life of the asset, and when I, it's going to be the same age as it was before. So therefore, it would be expense, because it doesn't extend or, or increase the capacity.
If you put a metal roof on it, it's going to extend.
Metal roof, metal roof might actually flip the other way.
Yeah.
No, I would, I would say no, but that's.
But that's true.
I like your first interpretation.
That's too theoretical.
As far as timeline, I don't know what I don't know yet, if you direct me to move on it, get the information.
Then I guess we would like a motion that we will proceed with the refurbishment of the existing gazebo without.
I, I would make a move that, uh, we, uh, direct our, our, uh, building of grounds to proceed with repair maintenance of the gazebo and old settler's park.
Unsupported.
Sounds like a good motion, or any second?
Yes.
Lends a second? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Anybody opposed? I think that takes care of the Old Settlers Gazebo project. Um, actually, we already talked about item six. That was asked for the movement of the funds in either October or November. All right, the park bench donation policy document.
We, or you.
Does everybody have our? Pictures of the benches.
The subcommittee report?
Yeah, we need to, we need to, we need to pick.
Well, let's, can, can I go over the? Get the parameters, so we can find out if there's any agreement, opposition, whatever, to this. Um, so our thought is, since we have three different parks, that maybe we would start with Veronica Valley, since it seems of there, well, actually, there has been interest in purchasing these there, and use that as a model to possibly move to other parks, and also possibly move to other fundraising activities, but that could be way down the line, we'll see how, how this works. Um, uh, parameters, we, we, we've talked more of, more in.
Do have some.
And, and I, and our committee, and, and, God, we're, we're blessed to have folks walk in and help us out. Lauren brought up the idea, yeah, that we could use in collecting donations, the same system that's used for Veterans Memorial down there, where you buy bricks, or you buy things like that. And, uh, Kathy explained how that would work, if we worked through this, uh, this, uh, an, an amount, a dollar amount that was, that was lower, and we talked about fifteen hundred bucks, so that the County Board wouldn't be burdened with approving these donations every time they come in. That's one of the problems with accepting donations, so the money part is, is doable in place. We, as, and, and I guess what we're looking for as a committee is to guidance, if, if this is something that, uh, that you feel would be worthwhile to, to proceed with under these parameters, uh, we don't have an exact amount, we're talking about hiring it outside of of, 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 of our, our building and grounds, just because they're busy in that, we've already kind of heard that. And, uh, it doesn't make sense to put it on their schedule. And so we would have a local contractor would agree to a price, will come in and, and would order it up with a plaque, and maybe when we got three or four, when it was worthwhile, the contractor would go out and build plates these, put a, either cement, or he talked about also, uh, some type of, uh, oh, a cement or. Yeah, some type of composite, bolted in, in places, and we picked out, there was about eight places we thought were the, where these might work. Um, and there is obviously the benefit of having the benches there, I mean, I think they're kind of cool. Probably that's a short sighted view of it, as in, I think the long-term benefit is it draws involvement from the community to that park, and it extends in ownership of the park to the community, it's been used in other, uh, other, uh, communities. So, yeah, we're not, you know, this isn't set in stone or granite or composite yet. Uh, but we just need to know if we're going in the right direction, and so, if you would like to endorse this, it would have to go to the County Board also, and we'll fill in some blanks first. Um, but we want to bring everyone along, make sure we're not, we're not extending ourselves beyond, uh, beyond the means. But there's no cost to the, to the county, kind of like them. The other parameter we thought through was, we're not going to use it as a fundraiser. We're going to use, and, and because you, you, you know, you can put much, much higher prices on these and people buy them, but that was not our intent to use this as a fundraiser, it was kind of like you're buying what you get, but maybe two or three hundred dollars or so administrative costs, just to help cover, just to run through the, through the books and things like that, so. I, I'd be glad to just shut up, which everyone, you should appreciate, and like, folks. I didn't expect two thousand.
So, could I make a motion that we endorse, that we continue to, uh, pursue the bench donation and get more information?
I second that motion. I second that motion.
Okay, the motion is discussed by you?
Um, I motion that we endorse the committee to continue to look into the memorial uh, donation benches, and, um, and ultimately, they will present it to the Board of Commissioners, um, with their findings.
Are they doing it for all three parks, or are they doing it only for Veronica Valley?
Well, it's going to be for all three parks, but we want to be the pilot program.
Yeah, so this motion would just be for Veronica Valley, see how it goes. Who buys it, it really doesn't go anywhere, uh, but if people are interested, uh, I can see extending it, because our three parks, which, which is such a blessing, our, our three parks have these three different personalities.
In geographical areas.
In, in different geographical areas, so what works for Veronica Valley is probably not going to be the best for Old Settlers, you want something more antiquey.
Victorian.
Yeah, yeah, looking at the document that Patrick provided.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the Victorian park bench with recycled plastic slats in this document, essentially it's the same benches that we already have at Old Settlers Park.
Yeah.
So I would continue, if we're going to have somebody who wants to donate a bench at Old Settlers Park, we will point them towards this bench as the one to, to buy. Um, I don't know that the benches have to be the same at all three parks, and actually, I don't think they need to be the same at all three parks. Although, all the benches at a park should be the same bench.
Each individual park committee would vote on what particular bench they like for their park.
Okay.
Any thought to how you're going to make this known to the public?
Well, it's going to have to be through media.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, my building has a story in the. My building has a story in the enterprise.
Well, that, working with morticians or anything like that, they could recommend it to people.
So if you posted a sign, do you have a kiosk in each park? So you have.
Yeah, we do have a kiosk.
So if you posted with kiosk, you know, just a, uh, memorial benches, would you, would you like this? Would you prioritize the users who are your friends?
Put a sign out here when people walk into the county building. We could make up flyers and.
Or something in the enterprise, a picture of black, the park with a bench plaque, an example of.
Sure.
That really, like, lasts about three days. You need something that's kind of.
I realize that.
Longer.
We, we really need to get something on our website too, under Parks and Rec. Actually, our website needs a lot of work under the, the heading Parks and Rec. I've been, I'm not, it's just, things just have been carried on and carried on and it's not, and given its own, its own attention. So.
So that's something.
So we have a motion and a second. So I'm going to ask, I'll call the question, and it's essentially supporting Veronica Valley's park bench program. Summarizing the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the motion?
I do like Keith's idea of individual committees for the three parks should meet before our next meeting and come up with our design choices, sharing everyone.
I mean, I went over to old settlers and we already pretty much have enough benches already. Although we do have Dee Wilkinson who was, wants to, like, put in one or two, and I, I know she wants to do the middle of the part, so. If we can accommodate finding locations for Dee, I think we should probably do that.
She would want to pay the pain of gazebo, wouldn't she? Not a sexy.
All right, so moving on to our next agenda topic. Survey the needs of to review the five-year plan with the commissioners. This is Lois's idea. What do you think it is?
It seemed to me that only Charlie and Keith were on the department committee when the plan was put together. So maybe the rest of the group isn't as familiar. Um, and I found it particularly interesting to look at the survey questions at the end. Um, and that might have directed my thoughts and see a deal differently if I had seen, you know, taken a more in-depth look at that. Um, so just useful, you know, trying to do what the citizens actually told us they wanted us to do.
Okay, I, I mean, I can take about five to ten minutes to max load.
Oh, really?
To summarize it. I mean, essentially, we had the old plan and the old plan would expire. We found ourselves on an accelerated timeframe to actually get a new plan in place, which was somewhere around six months or seven months rather than the normal two years to actually put a plan in place. So essentially, the original construction of the new plan was to take the old plan and just copy it, cop, copy paste it into the new plan. We also have the Miles Kimberly Park, who during twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four had essentially come up with a new conceptual design for the park. And what that part, that plan was approved by, by the Parks Commission to be included in the new five-year plan. So that's the major change in the new five-year plan was to adopt the conceptual design, the new conceptual design from Miles Kimberly into the plan. We didn't really change anything about all the historical data, the information. We knew, we had Kamala Ross said that we should probably change the mission statement with the Parks and Rec mission. And we'll notice the current plan says it's under, under being changed or something of those words, which we've now actually got a new mission statement that was adopted by the board of commissioners last month to be, to be put into the plan. We went through all the required steps for a new plan to get the plan approved and into the, the state. Michigan Department of Natural Resources is who was filed with. Was it everything there that I would have wanted? Not necessarily. Um, we did do the whole survey thing and the survey results were interesting. Uh, we did in one of our meetings kind of go through the survey results and say, X number of people really want a swimming pool? An indoor swimming pool? We just kind of immediately rejected that one out of hand. But.
Why?
Why? No. Well, anyway, so that was, that's, I mean, to summarize, that was what happened very quickly in an eight-month timeframe to go from inception to the new plan to actually getting it approved and through the process and files with the state in January of this year.
Well, I was bothered by the errors in the acreage of parks.
And so if you just took the. That was historic data that we just loaded in from the old plan and didn't want.
That's what I was saying, so, uh, housekeeping updates as you find errors might be valuable. You're going to use the plan when you do that grant application.
Technically, you can file a master plan update.
Okay.
Every year.
Well, all right.
Um, so if we have enough changes to the existing plan or say a new project that's not in the plan, so you can't get grant funding for that project if it's not in the plan. So now you've got to update the plan to add that project to the plan. So there are reasons that we might want to get into an annual cycle of review and update if there's enough changes that we really need to make to the document and file a new document with the state. And that's due again, the end of January.
Okay. I'm good at reading, I guess, because I've been doing it to the little edge on a.
So in your leisure time or before you go into that, you can read the existing plan.
I have.
And note any, note any changes I know we should make.
Okay, well, I mean, I think the maps could be clarified there. I mean, some of them are unreadable. I couldn't really.
Those, those are just pulled off the county's website, all the maps of all the stuff, all the townships. Those are just backed off the website and dropped into the backroom without any.
Yeah. Okay, read the plan, look at the list of updates.
It seems like the, uh, the topic changed to, or moving toward in the direction of priorities. I just, I think I speak on behalf of, of my, of both my, uh, my fellow committee members of Veronica Valley that our biggest need is a pavilion there. I just, I mean, it, it doesn't really show through if you look at ICIP or you look at this or you look at that. Uh, but from the folks closest to the park. Uh, I'm not advocating, I'm not sure what I'm advocating, but I just want just everyone to, to know that what and maybe our administrator to know and Patrick to know, that, that does really, I, it just doesn't show. If you just read through all of the, all of the documents, it makes it sound like, oh, that'd be kind of nice to have a pavilion there. But there is one thing that would, that would increase greatly the use of that park, and that is a pavilion. So families, there was a thirty percent chance of rain or, uh, they could get out of the sun. It's our only park without a pavilion.
I mean, you've got that. If you look at the five-year new plan, uh, page twenty of thirty-nine, it's, you know, things that scored highest were, uh, biking walking trails, natural open spaces, butterfly gardens, and shade shelters in parks.
There you go. I should have just asked you.
I know.
Anyways, I've got that up, so.
My comment on that suggestion, as, moving on to, well, when you look at number nine first, this is the document that Lauren provided. For our current score. Score two hundred and ninety, uh, dental five hundred. Central five hundred points. So obviously, we're better than fifty percent, but I think we.
Like, I will say, that's not a final number. Um, our consultant is compiling a few things to increase our points. And she said the one thing that we can provide as a commission are additional letters of support that will grant us additional points. Uh, and I, I have one, um, already. Um, the, the, a couple of the letters that were submitted from commissioners or people associated with the county. Uh, they were included in the plan, but they did not help us accumulate points. So that was the bit of feedback that, um, that we got from Tiffany at, uh, M C S, whatever, M C S.
Tiffany's still monitoring this.
Tiffany is, as well as our finance director, um, they all get the notifications of the progress of, uh, this grant.
I mean, I don't know if two-nine is good or bad.
Yeah, I know.
This is more informational. I couldn't tell you that either. Um, Tiffany was still optimistic and she was providing additional documentation. And our obligation is to provide additional letters of support.
From what I read on this, it's like we need to have more population in the area to get a higher score. You know, that's one of the things they look at. It's like, do you have, you know, Metropolis here?
Yeah.
Where people want to escape to a park. We don't have that.
That entire state of buildings.
Well, we don't have it in year-round residents. We have it in settlers. And we've got documentation that our population increases to approximately sixty thousand in the summer.
Two, two sixty thousand?
Sixty thousand.
Wow.
Well, six zero thousand.
Yeah.
Not two hundred and sixty.
Yeah.
Six zero thousand.
Right.
I don't know where politics starts and ends in this. But, uh, two days ago, I called Keith Charters, who was a longest-serving member on there, former chair. And I had had him there to one of our kids fishing day so he could explain to folks what the trust fund is all about, because he was one of the regional writers. And he said, don't worry, I'll take care of this. And I called him back, said he called two, well, Bill Ruston, who I just done a story for before, and another member of the trust fund. Said, yeah, I called them and I'll send the letter in. I, I wouldn't worry about it. I don't know if that means, he's, he is eighty-five, but he's with it. I mean, he's still, he's still alive. And so I know this is supposed to be a numbers game, but I think when it really comes down to that, there's, if you're, if you're close, they go through and they'll pick a few. If they do that, we're going to get bit. Now, I, but, and I probably said enough on that, but that's.
So you can still submit letters of support for a grant request until some point.
They have to be submitted by September thirtieth. Um, so if you have someone in your sphere who is, um, you know, an attendee of Kids Fishing Day who uses the park regularly, who, um.
Is handicapped.
Has, yes, has invested interest in accessibility at Veronica Valley. Um, the more, the better. So I have one which satisfies the minimum requirement that was asked for, from us by Tiffany. Um, if we can submit two to three, I would be very happy with that.
Did you get this one?
I did.
Did we get any letters from the commission? I might not be the one to go ask them, but yeah, it seems like a natural.
Which ones were excluded or not included in this score?
I don't know.
Okay, you said some, some category of letter.
Oh, um, like a, a letter directly from Alan Campbell is not considered.
Yeah, I said.
To earn points because he sits on the commission.
Because he sucks.
He would suck because of our, yes.
Does that count also for members of this board?
Letters from.
No, not for you, for myself.
I used to know Alan Campbell.
So my question was, does that count for members of this?
Members of this commission, if you submit letters, it will not contribute to points.
Right.
Third provision. Your kids. Seriously?
Yeah, your kids, your kids, if you have a, a child who would like to write a letter. Excellent.
Have grandkids.
So now, moving to item number ten. The twenty twenty-six grant applications, and so now the project you talked about, Alan, for the pavilion, I would see that being on the list of the projects that we would scope out and get in the hands of a grant writer to determine if it is eligible for a trust fund grant or a passport grant. Some things are, although I think that would probably be more dollars than we can get from a passport grant. And we also have all the projects that are in, in the C I P for the additions to Veron, to Miles Kimberly Park that need to be scoped, evaluated for the grant potential. And then we would go through and select the ones we want to apply in twenty twenty-six. So I'm going to look for a motion that we engage a grant writing person or organization to do what I just laid out, to scope the various projects, to review them for applicability of grants, application, availability of possibilities. And then we negotiate back and forth which ones we ultimately submit, submit applications. I asked for thirty thousand dollars to record in next year's budget for essentially grant, grant writing expenses. That's, in Tiffany's language, that was essentially five grants. She, she charges six thousand dollars a grant. So. So I'm looking for a motion that we go ahead and essentially ask the board of commissioners to authorize our engaging a grant writing organization to do this work.
I motion that we, um, ask the board of commissioners to, um, grant, uh, like, grant, grant a grant writer uh, to review the scope of possibilities for, um, trust or passport, um, capital improvement items.
Your grants.
Great.
Second half of the discussion?
Okay, so the second is by Lois.
I'm going to put an else on the end of that item. Items.
Items.
Discussion.
So in, uh, for Administrator Dyer, in the past, we've talked about having me, meeting a grant or a county because there are the departments that same situation where they don't have anybody to make these grant applications. Is that going anywhere?
My earlier comments are relevant to that question. So adding staff.
Yeah, so how do you get the money?
Well, that's a good question.
Can't ask for the money. Um, yeah.
Is there any way that we can have them send somebody to learn or obtain the qualifications to be a grant writer, an existing employee now?
I said we have someone that has those qualifications. I can give permission to perhaps. Well. I have in my mind certain things that we might be able to do. And it's going, it'll get played out in the budget process.
Yeah, because if you're going to write three grants a year, that's, that's a lot of savings if you have somebody in-house that can do that.
True.
I can make a comment, if that's okay. Um, are you suggesting these five grants be written, written in twenty twenty-six? These five that you're asking for?
I've, I've asked for enough money to fund five grants, up, up to five grants, let's put it that way, to be submitted in the twenty twenty-six cycle, which means the work would have to be done between now and April first.
I think a further discussion with administration and finance and with Patrick is necessary because if we implement and execute five grant projects, we would need to be very, very certain that we have the capacity to do that. We're, we're going to be very lucky to implement one, that, the, the pathway at Veronica Valley. Because not only that, we're going to have to do an R F P, all, like, all of it. So, um, I would just encourage the commissions, it's very good to say we want to do five grants, but to be very intentional with what work, what the capacity of your staff can, can take on.
I'm opening up what I brought up yesterday with the board of commissioners. Is, this is just my idea. In that we could take all the projects in the new facilities at Miles Kimberly Park that are in the new conceptual design. In that we could take all the projects in the new facilities at Miles Kimberly Park that are in the new conceptual design and potentially bundle them all into one grant application.
For?
Huh?
For?
For award in.
It was the monetary part that you said after that that had everyone shaking in their boots.
Well, I mean, they're shaking their head. I think the total estimate I had for all the new facilities at the park was, was about $1,600,000.
Chicken feet.
So a 50% match is $800,000. So we're, $800,000 of county money for $800,000 worth of state money. Or trust fund money. It's not actually state money, it's trust fund money. But not just my wild, crazy thing, but I would like to at least get the projects on, that we know that we want to do ultimately scoped out and evaluated as, for, for, for grant potential. Because you can't do anything without knowing that first, at least in my mind.
The other thing, of course, with a pavilion idea, that opens up the sexiness issue. Be real, as far as outside funding and match.
And maybe even getting doors.
Yeah.
A family around here that would, would mind having the.
Name it, right?
Yeah. Yes. The, the Bailey Memorial Pavilion would be an excellent, excellent choice.
No doubt. I like your proposal. I'm sure it's successful. So have you also looked at all the properties around Veronica Valley? Well, conservancy property and the area that they owns.
In, in our capacity as a county parks commission?
Well, you know, if you want to build trails and you can link into something else, or you have a facility for picnic shelter that isn't existing on any of the surrounding parks, then you've got some indoor history for your project too.
Yeah, it's a big birdie park. You know, a lot of birders that go there, a lot of walkers. So the park is quite useful.
We've got beavers too, though.
Yeah.
That could be a moving project.
I think that point was well taken that, and I hate to be contrary, but anyways, the five grants might be, might be a bit much as far as finding the matching funds within the next budget. The point also that was, we've been talking about scoping these projects to find out which ones are likely to be approved. That makes a lot of sense to me, you know, so that we, we know what we're up against anyway. So maybe some kind of a combination of recommending, I don't know, two or three perhaps, at, at least up to two or three. Requesting budget funds for up to two or three capital projects in county parks. Makes sense. And then also along with that, having someone look at our projects and ask us and tell us how best to do it.
You know, we might be surprised. We might have somebody in this county that could write grants, and I don't, we'd put the field out to to find out if there's a person like that, even if it's a retired individual, that is capable of writing grants. It's not going to be just anybody.
Yeah, I think what Charles was saying is up to five, we could, we could possibly change it up to three. But I think it also shows that we're trying to be aggressive and doing something.
And our five-year plan says we will try, we will endeavor to maximize grant opportunities and grant funding for projects within the county. That's right in our five-year plan. I just paraphrase what it says, but that's essentially what it says. So this is our way of doing that, getting started.
Our administrator, would you have any ideas of who to approach?
Well, I've been asked this question many times in, in other contexts, and I think it's really short-sighted to look for a grant writer. I, it's not, I mean, I can write grants. I'm not certified to do so, but I can write grants. The problem is not writing them. The problem is finding them, finding them and evaluating, do you actually fit the criteria? Are you going to get more than 200 out of 500 points on a DNR trust fund grant? And how is it, how is it going to be presented? So that aspect of writing is important. But it, you, you really need to have somebody that is searching for the grants much more than, than writing for them. And, and the other thing you really need to have, it's one thing to say we're going to write five grants. But if you don't have the matching funds necessary, you're, you're pissing in the wind. You're, you're, you're not going to get anything. I mean, you're not going to, you, you might get a grant, but then not be able to implement the grant contract. Because you don't have the funds to, you know, the, the, nobody likes new taxes, but you know how much you could, you could, you could raise a million and a half dollars in a bond and, and a tax with as little as about .04 mils in, in this, in this, and I'm not advocating that. I don't want anybody to say that I am. But I'm just saying, that's, if, if somehow you had just $140,000 a year dedicated to a 20-year bond, you could get, you could have a $2 million bond to, to, to do these things. And you wouldn't have to worry about grants. Or you could have a, a hundred, a $2 million park trust fund that could fund. You could go, it'd be one thing to say in your grant application, we've got $2 million sitting in the bank that we have to spend on parks, because that's what it's been allocated for, because we raised it through a bond issuance. And, you know, we've got the matching funds here. I don't know what that, what impact that would have on our, on our application, but I would suspect it would be positive. So those are some of the things that I think you need to, need to be thinking of. And, and, and again, it's not just. It really comes down to money in the end. Writing grants is great, but it, it still comes down to money in the end.
We do have a motion.
We're still having a motion on the table. Wait a second. I can call the motion. And we'll see where we go with that, or do you want to withdraw the motion at this point, because it's not really the right for going forward?
I withdraw the motion.
You withdraw the motion? So I would like to meet with the administrator and get flesh out a plan to do this and get it done.
You know, mo- motion or not, we'll, we're going to pursue the idea as best we can to implement a grant writing position. Now, is that going to be somebody that's existing in, on staff, or how we do that, I don't know. That's something, that's something we're going to be, we're going to be looking at. Whether that motion is, is continued or not.
Thank you. Might I just add in that, that the reason I was, all the reasons stated was why I, the, the five seemed like a big number. What I think might be more successful is if we didn't ask at one time for five, but we make it a priority to ask each year for one or two. And say, so that it becomes a regular budgeted item that, that we have in our budget. Whatever that might be, maybe 6,000, maybe 12,000, $10,000 every year for grant writing, so it becomes something continual.
Just, this, this grant cycle is, puts every, your construction always out set 12 to 18 months. You know, don't do anything until after the 12, 18 months is going to last. So anyway.
I give Kathy credit for not stopping in to explain how arduous, if you will, our current grant policy is. Because it is not just a question of approving a grant. We have a pretty detailed policy.
But, but again, the, the focus of that policy is, is to make sure you're not creating, you're not, you're not you're not seeking a grant and obtaining a grant that ends up creating a structural change in your budget. You know, that, that may not be fulfilled with the grant, when, with the grant when it expires. Particularly if it's, if it's to, to fund staff. Because then you end up having to either terminate staff or absorb them into your general fund budget. That's one of the reasons for the policy, the grant policy as it is, so we don't get ourselves into getting money that we really can't afford to spend. I know that's a, that sounds like a unusual concept, but it's, it's a real concept in governmental, in governmental operations. Grants are great until they run out.
What time did you say you had to leave?
I'm, I'm going to need to wrap up.
Let me just move on to the park reports. Miles Kimberly Park, anything to add to your book?
Well, we had a nice meeting with Patrick, just to kind of express feelings of weakness. I'm not sure we came to any solutions, but we're sympathetic, supportive. We'll find data if we can, and I hope you find the people and we've both had experience with nonprofits, so.
We've got our can of support, you know, even if this is processing paperwork, I mean, you saw that I'm kind of set up for it there. And you know, what's really helpful for me is these small working groups. That's one of the things I put in for is to have a, just a conference table there, because it's kind of stuffed into my office. But, you know, with, with, with the tools I, I have there, I mean, we can, you know, they make wireless mouses and keyboards, so we can sit at the table. We can put all up on a TV. I think a 50-inch screen now is 200 bucks.
Well, so, Mr. Parker?
I had a couple of projects that would be needed for spring. Should I meet with you directly or?
Sure, if there may be some repair, that's something I can definitely tackle, and if it's planning for anything else, certainly.
Um, well, just to highlight what the need is, so currently, the, the material that's underneath the swings in the playground, it doesn't meet the legal requirements. And the legal requirement is like 24 feet, and that there should be eight inches of chips. And that's, you know, for liability, you know, protection when somebody falls. And right now, you can go like an inch, an inch and a half down, and there's no more chips. It's dirt. So that need, there's an insufficient amount, so that needs to be updated, and there's not enough in the area around the swings in the playground to cover the, the requirements that we're supposed to have.
Sure. I mean, and the administrator can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, we get the, the, the policy or the, the requirement, and we can form that into an EDS.
Chips are expensive. I don't know if you realize that. They're very expensive.
But if, if you've got that information, even in an email, I can point something out pretty fast.
All right, very good. And then just the other thing is there's some benches that are starting to say, so I'll outline those. The seats.
Okay, sure. What would be helpful is, is actually wear it around my neck. We could file a work order request, and then that gets right to our work list.
Okay.
If these benches are picnic tables.
Picnic table.
The benches are on picnic tables.
Correct, sorry.
Sure, sure. Let's get it detailed. I'll show you how to super easy.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else from all sectors?
No, sir.
And Veronica Valley?
Oh, our park bench plan, we're going to decide amongst ourselves which bench we like. I know that they don't agree with my choice, but we'll go along. But then we'll get that, we'll get that decided and go forward with that.
Hardass wanted metal.
You wanted all metal?
No, we all have homework assignment here, guys. We all need to write a letter. Just one letter from everybody on this board. Everyone's had a kid, everyone's got a brother, somebody not associated in Leavitt County. My God, we got a Kiesel out here. That'll be worth 20 letters right there. No, everyone just write one letter.
Yeah, a coworker, a friend, a neighbor.
Just lean on them and send it to Lauren. We only got till the end of this week, so.
End of this week, please.
So that's everyone's assignment. Just one letter apiece, and I think we're over the hump. And give me an idea of what the subject line is.
It's in support of the Veronica Valley Loop Trail, Lower Pond Loop Trail.
ADA compliant.
Could you maybe send them a copy of this letter, and you can just work off it?
Yeah.
Anything else from Veronica Valley?
Nope.
So we'll have a comment around our public, so I'm assuming administrator Liston Jordan wants to make your final comment.
Okay, don't pull it.
Staff comments? Any final staff comments? Commissioner comments? Eric Gunnell, Susan, Chairperson Jones, thank you for your participation. Here, here, you're in the meeting.
Everybody, I really appreciate it.
I don't, I don't know if that, what that means. From Mr. Charters. But, and, and helps them.
You have to that word.
Yeah, I think that's all it is, is that we do our part. How do I get that? Yeah, I can't tomorrow. I got to work.
Which one do you like?
I like it too. Back, well, actually.
There is there. Most recent.
This one right here.
Okay, and that's all metal.
I know. That goes a lot colder than the plastic wax.
I know, I know. See, now with that, you can choose your color too.
They're going to freeze the free dimension, not the area.
My concern with the one that you like and that we're going to probably choose is the color. Does that fade? Does the sun fade in that? I don't know.
I know.
Because I know the.
Oh, yeah, mine might get too.
We're good.
Thank you. I'm there every day.
Actually, it's the best price. It's actually the cheapest bench.